Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Foster, could you please give us the television coverage announcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Ynez Valley, Santa Maria and Orca areas. Rebroadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20.
Thank you so much. And now the roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Gottstanker?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Idelson?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
Chair Burrows?
Thank you very much. We will now move to the agenda status report. Ms. Black, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. This morning, we have four items on your agenda, three permit items, excuse me, five items on your agenda, four permit items, and the temporary use ordinance amendments. And we are ready to move forward on all of the permit items. We are requesting that item number five, the temporary use ordinance amendment item, be dropped at this point. We'll renotice that when we're ready to come back to the Commission. But as you may have seen, we're having some difficulty getting through the County Planning Commission. And so, we really don't want to come back to your Commission with ordinance language until we know where we're heading in that regard. With respect to the projection report, if you'd like me to move on?
Yes, please.
We do have a hearing scheduled again for your Commission next month, on November 28th. That's the Wednesday after the Thanksgiving holiday-long weekend. And on that day, we've have two items on your Commission's agenda, the Crown Castle, which is the previously Next G Monocito inland conditional use permits. And we also have the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, which does have some applicability in Montecito and will be a recommendation to the County Planning Commission. They'll be hearing that later on in December, I believe, at their December 12th hearing. We do not have a hearing scheduled for Montecito in December. And in fact, we've really scheduled the County Planning Commission to take the only Wednesday that would have been available to have a meeting later in December, the December 19th date. So, we're, at this point, projecting not having a hearing in December, but we'll obviously assess that and figure out a date if we determine that we need one.
All right.
I'd like to move on. I'd like to move on and discuss your hearing schedule for 2013. I believe that you have a draft schedule with some color.
Yes, we can have that.
As you can see, we've got the Montecito Planning Commission projected out to meet every month. And obviously, if we don't have items, we'll go ahead and cancel hearings as appropriate. And currently, we have the Montecito Planning Commission meeting on the fourth Wednesdays of each month. The County Planning Commission also reviewed this schedule at their last hearing and suggested that they would prefer to meet on the fourth, the first, second, and fourth, or last Wednesday of the month, if there are five Wednesdays. And we're wondering if the Montecito Planning Commission had concerns about switching your schedule back to the third Wednesday of the month.
Would the Commission like to speak to that request, to that option? Ms. Gottstanker, please.
I don't have any problem with going to the third. In fact, I actually liked it very well when it was the third.
Commissioner Phillips?
I'm fine.
Commissioner Idelson?
It's okay with me.
Overall? I think we're good with that. Thank you.
Great. Then, Madam Chair, we will come back next month with a revised schedule with those hearing dates bumping up one week, so the third Wednesday of the month. Sounds like a great solution.
All right. Ms. Black, I'm a little unclear on that.
Mr. Overall, please.
I'm sorry. Unless I'm reading it incorrectly, it looks like that's already reflected on the schedule. The 23rd of January, I think, would be the third week.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, actually, because January 2nd would be the first.
The first.
The 23rd is the fourth, so you would actually be meeting on January 16th.
All right.
And February 20th, and March 20th, and so on. So, we'll come back with a revised schedule.
We'll have the revised schedule next time.
Great. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I did have a question, Ms. Black, about the projection report. Under the county PC, December 12th, it notes that we have the PC holiday luncheon. Is that to include us accurately? Is that right? I mean, it usually does, so I just see it here.
Yes. Madam Chair and Commissioners, I apologize.
Okay, that's fine.
My brain is just not into the fact that it's almost Christmas. You know, or in our calendaring, it's almost Christmas, but yes.
We're with you on that.
Absolutely. It's for all of the planning commissioners, and we hope that the Montecito Planning Commissioners will be able to attend as well as the County Planning Commission.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Ms. Black. We will now move to public comment on any item not on the agenda. So, would anyone like to speak to the Commission? Please, sir.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
John Thorndike from Toro Canyon.
Welcome.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas early. I have a map here. You're welcome to a copy of it. It's, oh, thank you. It's, I'll give you most of it here. Well, you have the important part there. This is a map that shows the direction of the road and a circle in the center, which is what the interest of the county is. The county's interest is a circle in the center. Am I talking okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, the circle in the center is a concrete retaining wall 30 feet high, and it's staggered up. It's a very nice one. Deer like it, by the way. They climb it. And below it is what it's there for, essentially, it's there to give me a place above it to move, to build. And below it is for the county to do what they want, I guess, with the vaults, one of which is steel, the first one, the second one is concrete. And they were built by the U.S. EPA. The whole thing was built by them. And I don't know what you have in mind, but anyway, the judge said I could build above the artesian well, which I own. Now, the county said that they weren't interested in water, they weren't interested in avocados, they weren't interested in anything but dirt. And I said, "It sounds like a dirty trick to me, you taking that property." I think you want, really, the oil, water, gas, and mineral rights, and I own all of those. So, when the county takes the middle, they took it under eminent domain, or at least under the threat of eminent domain, and they wrote me a letter afterwards saying, "Please note that the limited access license agreement, which your attorney, Carl Gaines, submitted to the county for execution on July 9 of 2010, was not executed. Instead, we went back to the prior year and used your signature for that one." And that prior year was 12/8/09. And it was a real property purchase contract. Well, you know, that's dirty pool. And they said, "Because, due to the fact that above, there is no reason to stake the property as you have requested," but which I have several letters from the county saying that they would do that. I don't understand how, after the fact, they changed their mind. Well, my thing is, I want to have, there's another one. I have five letters from the county, from Shane Stark, saying, "We'd be glad to do something with you, take you up there and show you where your property lines are." Well, this letter says, "Due to the fact, these facts, we see no reason to stake the property as you have requested." And the key is two words, two little words, "in fee." "We are unaware of any other property owned in fee in the immediate vicinity." The county fought those two words, disagreed with the court ruling that I owned in fee. And because of those two little tiny words of five letters total, they have given me grief untold. And they have taken one of my vehicles, by the way, with the same grief occurring in five letters. And those were two words also. They took my car because it still had a dead woman's name on the ownership.
Sir, Mr. Thorndike.
And that's just a technicality of law, which I dislike very much. And the statutes do not run on criminal things, and that's a criminal thing.
Sir, sir, the time is up, and...
Well, I'd like to have you tell me if you could get the county to go up there with me and show me what they think they own and stake it out. I would appreciate that.
Sir, I don't think we have any jurisdiction over these issues. If Ms. Black would like to make a comment, that might be helpful.
I sure appreciate it, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, you're correct. You don't have any jurisdiction. This is outside of the Montecito community plan area. So, we heard Mr. Thorndike, and we've heard him before, and I'm happy to talk to you later.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Well, at least you know what's going on.
We do, indeed. Thank you for being with us today. We have one more public comment, and it is by John Abraham Powell. And this is for items not on the agenda today.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is John Abraham Powell. I'm a candidate for the Montecito Fire Board. I wanted to reach out to you as a fellow authority having jurisdiction, as someone who would like to be on the fire board, and as someone who served as Director of Relief Services for the Mountain Drive Community Association after the T-Fire. And after the T-Fire, what we saw was a great era of communication between the authority having jurisdictions and the community. We saw some really strong work, especially on the part of the county, in reaching out to the community and helping us deal with the disaster, and I think that's exemplary. One of the areas of difficulty we had was private roads. And as someone who wants to be on the board, I wanted to bring an issue to your attention, which is the current fire code in relation to the Montecito community plan. And if you look at the community plan, it defines Montecito as an area, semi-rural area with narrow winding roads and no sidewalks. Well, what we discovered after the T-Fire was that there was an issue where safety and planning might need to put their heads together a little bit, because the new fire codes call for common driveways of 20 feet wide, which is a very good thing for safety, but it is going to be an issue for Montecito in general, especially if there's another fire. The reason I'm bringing this to your attention is, this is the kind of thing where, if we look ahead and make sure that we balance safety and planning, we can make sure to maintain kind of integrity with the community plan as we move forward to improve safety. Because this isn't just an issue for private roads. If you look at Montecito in general, many of the public roads are not wide enough to meet the private driveway standards right now. And this is going to be an ongoing issue, and I wanted the Planning Commission to be aware of it, to be looking forward, to make sure that we're planning ahead, because the T-Fire is not going to be the last fire. And so, if you go from Ribbon Rock to Bella Vista to Hidden Valley, Miramar Lane, there are dozens of public roads that do not meet the current width required for private driveways in Montecito. And this is going to be an ongoing issue, where we're going to need to balance safety with the community plan. And what I'd like to see is, like after the T-Fire, another era of cooperation between authority having jurisdictions, to reach out and make sure that the community is involved in the decisions that are going to affect the plan and the integrity of the community as we move forward. So, thank you for giving me an opportunity to bring this to your attention today, and hopefully, will be on this board and look forward to a new era of cooperation between the different jurisdictions in Montecito. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. We will now move to the Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Anything that you would like to share with us and the public in regard to events or things that you have witnessed over the past month? Ms. Gottstanker, please.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Phillips, please.
Nothing.
Sir.
Yes, I attended the recent SB-CAG meeting and was fortunate to hear a fine presentation by my fellow colleague, Commissioner Overall.
Thank you. Commissioner Overall, please.
Thank you, Dan. I think in light of that, I probably need to tell you what it was. On last Thursday, on the 18th, at the request of Mayor Schneider of the City of Santa Barbara and First District Supervisor Carver Hall, an item was agendized for the full hearing of the SB-CAG Board to hear an alternative approach to the widening of Highway 101 through the south part of the county, specifically through the Montecito portion. And a presentation was made that differed from what Caltrans has offered thus far. There were two principal points of it. Two design exceptions would be required. One of them would be to leave in place the left-hand off-ramp at Cabrillo Hot Springs. That's the area where you know that we just, in the multiple operational improvements, they widened the bridge to accommodate three lanes, and they put the three lanes in. So, one would leave that off-ramp in place. And the second would be to start the proposed HOV lane south of the Montecito corridor to where the highway straightens out. A motion was made by Supervisor Carver Hall to require, for SB-CAG to require Caltrans to do a full environmental review analysis of the alternative. And after some discussion and public comment, that motion passed on a vote of 12 to 1. And so, they will be taking the next step, and obviously, we'll all stay tuned, because it affects us.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Overall. I attended the Montecito-sponsored event at the Biltmore, where they invited various community groups, nonprofits, public service agencies, that kind of thing. It was very well done, and I think the Montecito Association is to be commended, for taking the lead and bringing the community together. We will now move on to consider minutes of the, oh, no, I saw it. Yes, the minutes, of the September 26 meeting. Does the Commission wish to approve these minutes? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will now move to Dr. Russell's Director's Report, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. I have a few items to bring you up to date on. Since your last Montecito Planning Commission meeting of the 26th of September, there have been three board meetings. On the 2nd, I'm pleased to, the 2nd of October, I'm pleased to report that we were able to accept two important grants, which will fund planning work primarily next year. And these are Caltrans Community-Based Transportation Planning and Environmental Justice Grants. One is for the Mission Canyon Multimodal Improvement Project, which I'll have a little bit more to say in a moment. And the other is for the Los Alamos Pedestrian Circulation and Parking Plan. So, all told, it's more than $200,000 of funding to support largely planning work to address those issues. We're very pleased about this, because the Mission Canyon Plan is all about safety, and the Los Alamos Pedestrian Circulation and Parking Plan is all about promoting revitalization of that community. So, these are things that we're very happy, these are the kinds of things that Planning and Development is very happy to be involved in. On the 9th of October, we were to hear the Goolsbee &amp; Goolsbee Verizon Appeal, but the parties are still diligently looking for an adequate and mutually acceptable solution. So, they agreed to continue the hearing until the 6th of November and extend the shot clock until the 13th of November. So, I'm afraid I can't tell you, I'm not aware of any impending solution, but we're very hopeful that this can be worked out to the satisfaction of the community. And finally, on the 16th of October, there was actually a presentation on the Mission Canyon Plan, and that was a presentation given by Planning and Development and Public Works, who will be focusing on the county side of the multimodal, safety-oriented plan in conjunction with the Mission Canyon Community Plan work, but also will be collaborating with the city. And in particular, there is a group of private citizens organized into a group that is called Safe Passage. And so, it's a very, very, very exciting collaboration, District 1, District 2, the city, the private citizens group. And it will be a planning project, not an implementation project, but a planning project to see what we can do to increase safety there amidst all of those very, very important historic resources, which are effectively no touch. And so, we'll have to be very creative in terms of enhancing bicycle and pedestrian safety in areas where people, at this point, have to walk in the road in certain areas when they're going from the Mission to the museum, for example. And our plan will go beyond that, up to the Foothill Boulevard. But again, that's a very, very exciting plan. And we heard the appeal of the Park Hill Estates project in District 2 in the eastern Galita Valley. And that project, the appeal was denied, and the project was approved on a vote of 3 to 1. So, we'll see what comes next. Those are the items that I have for you today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? If not, thank you very much. Ms. Black?
Madam Chair, if you're ready to move into your standard agenda item, I just wanted to let the Commission know that I won't be participating in item number one.
Thank you very much.
Ms. McCurdy will sit in on, in my behalf.
Thank you. We will now move to the standard agenda, item number one. Ms. Foster, could you please read that into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a request of Rita Bright, AMEC, Agent for the Montecito Fire Protection District, to consider the following. 12 CUP-15, application filed on May 14, 2012. 12 GOV-19, application filed on October 4, 2012. 12 GOV-20, application filed on October 14, 2012, and to accept the final environmental impact report, SCH-2011031094, prepared by the Montecito Fire Protection District. four, prepared by the Montecito Fire Protection District pursuant to the state guidelines for the implementation to CEQA.
Thank you so much. At this time, I would like to bring this back to the commission for a decision on how we will proceed on this item. Commissioner Overall, please.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, I, I would like to, in light of the, um, public significance of this, um, project, particular project, and in light of the controversy it's engendered, and the fact that we have a, uh, election in the community coming up, um, that relates specifically to how the fire department, uh, district will be run and assessment of a number of issues, I think it appropriate that we actually continue this item, um, and to some later date and have it brought back to us, um, at such time as the new elected Board of Directors and the, uh, officials of the fire district deem it appropriate after they've had a chance to review the issues. So I'd like to make a motion to continue this to, uh, for at least ninety days.
All right. Please.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I would like to state that staff, we do have a presentation that's all prepared on this project, and I know there are a fair number of people that are here to, um, hear this item, so it is our recommendation that you at least, um, listen to the staff presentation and take any public comment. And if there is to be any kind of a continuance, um, our recommendation would be that it would be for some reason, such as if you need additional time to review the environmental documents or a matter like that, rather than, um, a matter of other scheduling issues or election issues.
Yes, I think this is an important issue, and I think it's one that the community wants to be informed on, and I think it's one that I feel very strongly that I need to be very prepared to make a decision on and to ask the appropriate questions and receive the appropriate information. So therefore, um, I would like to continue this so that I have more time to review the EIR. Unfortunately, we did not have access to, we did not receive notification or hard copy of the draft EIR on this project, which would have been very helpful in helping us frame the issues. Um, I believe that I received the, uh, final EIR on this project, um, two weeks ago. I received the agenda report, the staff report on this item, um, less than a week ago. So in order to, um, to make sure that I, as Commissioner, am prepared to go forward on this and move it toward taking a vote, if the commission should choose to do so, I would support a continuance of this project to another time certain. I'd like to hear from the other commissioners, please. Ms. Gottsberger, please.
Well, I, um, I agree with, uh, Mr., both Mr. Overall and Chairman Burrows. I also agree with staff's recommendation, um, that, uh, that we hear public comment. We hear from who, the speakers that have put their speaker slips in because that information is information that we can hear today and/or we can hear it whenever we continue the project. But in our, um, work that we're going to be done behind the scenes between today and whatever the continuance date is, why not have the info? I mean, we've had three lengthy, um, uh, documents that were, that we got yesterday, um, that I think are real, that are pertinent to the project and would be pertinent to me as I go through and study the project. So rather than just going, let's just continue it, and then we're going to be in the same place ninety days from now, I would, my, I would be it for going for staff's recommendation that we hear everything, then continuing it, continuing it to a time certain that would be appropriate.
All right. Commissioner Adelson, please.
Yeah, I think we should probably, this is a big, big event, a big project, and I would favor hearing the, first of all, the staff report. I think that would be appropriate to have that today. And then hear, uh, the public comment relative to this project, the people that are prepared for it, and, and continue it after that time and forego deliberation on the part of this, this commission until a future time. But I do think it, it will at the end need a continuance because of the nature and the, the size of this thing and the, and the volume of data we had to process. I put in at least twenty hours just on that environmental document, and, uh, I could use extra time. But I would like to have this, the staff report, and I would like to have the applicant's input and any, any public comment.
Commissioner Overall, please.
Um, I am reluctant to have us hear the, um, the staff report and the applicant's, um, submission, uh, simply because we're going to be faced with some length of time between now and the time we come back with intent to make a decision on it. And if, the information's going to get stale in that period of time. I think to the extent that we don't have public comment, uh, I mean, I think that, I think, uh, Ms. Gottsberger is correct, there's, was a substantial amount of information that we got, uh, in the way of public comment, letters anyway, uh, that probably could you, you know, might help inform, uh, additional research that we do before we come back. So maybe it's appropriate to hear that. But I think to go through the exercise of hearing this, the full staff report and the applicant, and then postpone this for ninety days seems to me like, um, not the best use of our time and their time.
I'm in agree with, um, Commissioner Overall. Commissioner Phillips, we have not heard, do you have an opinion on this?
I don't.
All right. All right. Um, then what I would suggest is that the commission vote on the, um, uh, on the first issue.
Uh, Mr., Ms., Ms., Commissioner Burrows, um, excuse me, you don't have a second on the table yet, by the way.
I, I, I'm getting ready to address.
Oh.
Yes.
Madam Chair, might I be heard on behalf of the applicant?
Um, there's nothing to be heard on at this point.
Well, yes, there is something to be heard on because the timeline in which this is proceeding, uh, is subject to the Permit Streamlining Act, and the timeline will run out before ninety days. Um, in fact, the date that we've calculated when the, uh, action needs to happen is December ninth. So if you are, uh, inclined not to take it up today, we would urge you to schedule it for a date prior to December ninth. We also would urge you not to continue it on this basis. You know, the, the district board, uh, is the applicant here. The district board voted to put this matter in front of you, certified the EIR, and approved the project. So whether a new board is elected and how that board will act in light of your decision is a completely separate process.
Absolutely.
So we, we would urge you to really take, take this as it comes to you today, as recommended by the staff on behalf of this applicant, uh, which has worked very long and hard to bring it to this point. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counsel, please.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Ms. Basham just started the process that I was going to recommend, which is that, uh, we need to take public comment before your commission takes any action, uh, at least as to the issue of continuance.
Yes.
And, um, and, and I, while that's happening, if that's what your commission would like to do, I wanted to check on a few other issues, um, on, on timeframes.
Yes.
So we can get an idea of that.
Yes. Um, what I, what I think might best serve all of us is if we, um, decide on the baseline issue of continuance or hearing the full thing today, and then after the commission has, um, considered that, then we would go to public comment on the continuance, not on the merits of the, of the project before us. Am I right?
Uh, Madam Chair, that's correct, but I would just recommend that you actually take public comment before your commission makes a decision, and that way you can consider the, the testimony that's provided in your decision.
All right. At this time, then, we will move to public comment, um, on the issue of whether or not, um, let's see, on whether we hear this issue today or whether it be continued to another time certain. Would anyone like to comment on this, please? Please state your name for the record.
I'm Mary Rose, and I would like to urge you to, uh, to, uh, grant the continuance. Uh, one of the major problems with this project for you considering a conditional use permit is actually all of the operational dis, details of the permit. Um, there is, if you look at the project description there, uh, that is before you today, there really is no operational information, other than the number of staff proposed there. Um, and, uh, they, the district really does need to address the operational details of this project, um, in order for you to move forward with the CUP.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this, uh, the subject before us? Mr. Cole, please.
My name is Joseph Cole. I would urge a continuance as well. The, if you look at the project description of the EIR, the project has more from a response time, set of facts, to now we're talking about a training facility, which hasn't really been set forth in the EIR or the, um, site study. Uh, there's still a lot of outstanding information about, uh, the four apparatus space, what kind of garage is going to be operated there. Uh, Ms. Basham just wrote about a strike force assembly area. Tomorrow, the, uh, district is actually having at its meeting what I consider a very helpful and extraordinary, uh, presentation of, which I hope includes the financial projections and staffing and so forth for coming up. So we, there's a lot of information that, that the public doesn't have, that I think we, we will pick up a lot of it tomorrow. I think you're going to be wasting your time, uh, spending a lot of time today. Uh, and I also think that, uh, it will get stale, as Commissioner Overall stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments as to the, I'm sorry? Yeah, oh, just.
Madam Chair, I'm Brian Reekie, and I reside at two-three-four-seven East Valley Road, and I have done for fourteen months. Um, the, I've reviewed the EIR, and it fails for me in two accounts. I have never been consulted along with the design of that. I would like, given time, to consult with the architects about the screening that's going to interrupt my visual of the, the building. And the second thing is the, it does create, uh, a blight on the agricultural area surrounding my property. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I urge a continuance. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Russell, please.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, staff recommendation would continue to be to hear the, uh, staff report and hear, uh, from the people who've taken the time to come here today. And, uh, of course, that is your decision, but I, the only point I would really like to make is, I think you should carefully consider whether or not what you might hear today would be helpful for you in terms of everything that you need to be reading. Obviously, uh, as, um, uh, the chair has indicated, the, there's a lot of information, and it only very recently came forward, and it's going to take a lot of study, a lot of, uh, work. And so I would, uh, just, um, urge you to consider whether anything that you might hear today from the testimony or the staff report might be helpful to you in the, uh, uh, event that you would like to continue the item in order to have more time to read the environmental document.
Thank you. Of course, the flip side of that is whatever information we might hear today, uh, might change in the interim. There might be circumstances that, that might change the information we have. Um, counsel, please.
Madam Chair, if the commission doesn't mind, I would just like to request a, a five-minute break. I just want to consult with the staff on the time, some timing issues.
Okay, I do have more speakers as to the continuance.
Oh, okay.
Can we?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Absolutely. We'll, we will take a break on this. Susan Basham, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, once again.
Thank you.
You need to start where, where this is, and this is an item that is fully prepared for your hearing today. Staff has provided you a report that is as thorough as any I've ever seen. Um, the applicant is fully prepared to present its case, and whether it's a complicated matter or not, you have to start where you start. Um, if, if new information comes up later and if this matter is continued, you will hear that new information at the, at the hearing where it's continued. But I would strongly urge you to take the matter as it has been briefed for you by your staff and as the applicant is prepared to present it today. Um, all of the information that you hear today will be relevant to your decision, whether you make it today or at, or on another date, and it's, it is all of the background that you need to begin to think about this item, uh, in the coherent and careful way that I know you want to proceed. So I would urge you, uh, to consider the item, uh, in your normal course, um, by hearing it, by hea, by hearing your staff presentation, by hearing the applicant, by hearing any testimony from the public, and then if you wish not to deliberate, obviously that's something you can decide. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Susan Keller, please.
I also would like to urge continuance. Um, I know it's frustrating for those people who are here prepared to speak and prepared to give presentations, but I believe it would be to the benefit of the fire district to have the continuance because in the course of my candidacy as a district, uh, board member, I have seen the controversy in the community and have heard the, the divergence of opinion, and I think it would behoove the fire district to have the additional time to make a better case to the community for the need for this fire station as is currently presented. Right now, what I'm hearing in the community is not just people who have questions about the financial feasibility of it, which I have acknowledged, but there are people who simply don't see this as being a necessity, don't see the size and scope of it as being as a necessity, and it would really be to the benefit of the fire department if, when they do proceed, they have the support of the community, they have the full backing of the community, and they don't have such a great deal of difference of opinion. Uh, there has, there was an excellent article in the Montecito Journal last week in which there was a very good case made for the decreased response time, but there are other issues that need to be addressed, and I think they need to get that information out to the community and have the, have a chance to build the community support for this. So a continuance would be to their benefit as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Rita Bright, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of the Commission. My name is Rita Bright. I'm the agent for the Montecito Fire Protection District, and I would urge your Planning Commission to reconsider the concept of continuing this item. I, um, believe, listening to some of the comment, that there is a bit of a disregard for the fact that the district is the lead agency, that the district has a current board in effect. That is the very reason why we are here, and that we should not second-guess the existing board. This is not even a lame duck board. This is a board that's in place, and as I mentioned, this is the board that is the very purpose and reason that we are here. Um, so I would urge your commission to carefully consider the basis of a continuance, and please let the board, um, decide the fate of this fire station. The, the budget issues, the financial issues are all within the jurisdiction of this lead agency. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna Citroen? I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
No, you got it right.
All right. And you're speaking, um, in regard to the continuance?
I am.
All right, thank you.
Oh.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Anna Citroen, an attorney with the Law Office of Mark Chitillo, and I'm here today representing the Montecito Agricultural Foundation. We would urge a continuance of this matter, um, for all of the reasons that your commission stated. Um, most importantly, the new information that has come to light that's been discussed so far today, um, really needs to be, uh, considered and evaluated and incorporated into the staff report and into the, uh, to the CUP and the findings. Um, the letters that were submitted into the record on this matter, including, uh, a letter that, uh, that we submitted, um, really detail all of this information, missing information, questions that still need to be answered. And we believe that on the basis of those letters, um, there's more than enough information for you to, uh, refine, refine again, the staff report and relevant project documents. And we think that, that continuing the matter at this point, um, considering the letters and coming back at some later date is, is the appropriate, uh, is the appropriate way to proceed. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more comments from the public in regard to the continuance? If not, uh, would a break be in order? Let's please take a five-minute break? A five-minute break? Your Planning Commission, we're on item one. The issue before the commission at this time is, do, would we like to continue this item, um, to another date? Uh, we have, um, three people, I believe, in support of that. Uh, so why don't we start with Commissioner Gottsberger? Are you willing? Would you like to continue this item to another date?
Is this a yes or don't vote? I mean, we did have considerations in there.
Yes, we do have considerations on when and if we will hear, um, um,
Public comment today.
Exactly.
So I, I don't know what, what your question is, or is that with the considerations? Or is that an up and down vote for me to say, I want the, it continued whether I hear the, um, presentations or not?
This is strictly as to the continuance. We will decide on the details of the continuance after this vote. We will decide on the details of the continuance after this vote.
No.
No continuance? All right.
I'm not willing to do that. I, you know, I do not, I will, I'm willing to continue the item, but I'm willing to continue I, the item after we've heard the public comment and presentations. Then I'm more than happy to proceed with the item, you know. My other question here is that, in the, in the conversation prior to we taking our break, staff and the lawyer, Ms. Basham for the department, had said that there actually were some permit timing and some procedural timings, that we are bound by law, and the planning and development is planned by law, to proceed with, with applications in a timely manner. And I, I want to know what that is before I override with my opinion and how I want it to go.
All right.
What the law is.
Yes. We are ready to address that. Would you like to address the time issues at this point? Counsel, please.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to. So there's two different timeframes that we're looking at. One is permit streamlining, and that runs from, it's 180 days from the date that we deem the application complete. So that would run, I don't have an exact date, except that it runs from June 12th, and is, would be the beginning of December.
Madam Chair, we did calculate that out to December 9th.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the, the other timeframe is, you have three requests before you today. You have the conditional use permit and two government code consistency determinations, or conformity determinations. One is under 65402A, and one is under 65402C. Under 65, both of them have a 40-day timeline from the date of application, which in this case was October 4th, was the date of application. Under 65402C, failure of the planning agency to report within 40 days after the matter's been submitted to it, shall be conclusively deemed a finding that the proposed structure or building is in conformity with the adopted general plan. So, so what happens is, if your commission doesn't make a conformity determination on that application within 40 days, then it's deemed to be a finding of conformity. Your commission would still have discretion over the remaining, the conditional use permit application, if it's continued beyond that date.
And what would be the date? Is that November 12th?
I'm sorry, what's the question? Oh, around November 14th, 13th or 14th?
12th or 13th.
12th or 13th. It's the 40 days.
All right. Any more information as to the timeline?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, those are the two timeframes. I'm happy to answer any questions. I, you know, your next meeting is scheduled for November 28th. That would be within the permit streamlining timeframe for your commission to act, but we would run up against the 65402C deadline.
All right. Commissioner Gosdanger, please.
As far as the, the other, those other, the other two parts that run out on November 12th, what is that? If we don't act on those, if we don't act on those today, and it runs out, what is, what's the repercussions to the applicant? I mean, does that mean that they have to file new fees, they have to, I mean, what happens here if we don't make a decision on those two items?
Yes.
Oh, is that what you said?
Madam Chair and Commissioners.
They become automatic?
They become, well, for the, for, at least for one of them, it becomes conclusively deemed to be in conformity. So, it does not.
And that, that is, that has to do with the purchase, right? Is that the one we're talking, is that number two?
It's for acquisition, disposition.
Yeah.
Public building or structure.
Right, that's number two.
So, any pieces.
Okay. And that would automatically just become a yes?
And that's correct. And, and you know, one option for your commission, another option, other than continuing the item today, is to, you know, hear the presentation, hear from the public, act on the 65402 application today, and continue the decision on the conditional use permit. That's one option, and you'd be able to meet both timeframes. But it's within the discretion of your commission to determine the best course.
Okay. If we decide to extend, to take that and extend the decision on the CUP, what would be our deadline on that?
December 9th.
December 9th, I think.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the CUP, for the permit streamlining, that would be the December 9th.
So that would stay?
So that would stay, and that would be continuing to November 28th, for that decision would meet that timeline.
All right.
So, Ms. Chairman, just, so I'm really, I just want to get really clear then, is that in Mr. Orell's motion, he had a 90-day timeframe in, as part of the motion. So for me, I'm, I cannot approve that, that motion, given the information that we now have, because we need to hear it in less than 90 days, given the permit timing here. We've got to hear it in November.
Yes, that motion is not before us. It was not seconded.
Well, okay, so then, the motion, okay, so you're, you're saying then, the motion that before us is to whether to continue the item or not?
We're not looking for a motion at this point. We're looking for the consensus of the commission on the sole issue of whether or not we are willing to continue this item.
I'm sorry, I thought we were dealing with a motion. Okay. So, my, my point of view on that is that, yes, it would be appropriate to continue the item within the permit timing framework. You know, yeah, yeah, if we wanted to continue it today, I still would like to hear, given that now we're going to, it's only a month, so the, the rationale was that it was, we were going to have, it was, the information was going to be old in our memories, then now, now we're looking that, well, why not hear that information today? Because we're going to be back here in, it looks like, November to, to hear whatever we're going to hear.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner Orell, please.
I have a question for counsel. What, what is it that puts us in this time box? This is a little unusual for us, and I'm not quite sure how we got here. Under, if this were the Music Academy or something, we'd continue until we got the information. So, what's, what's going on here?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Orell, that's a good question. It is unusual for us to be in this box, because normally, the Permit Streamlining Act runs from the date of adoption of a negative declaration, or from certification of the EIR. And when we are the lead agency, we take up that action at the same time. So we normally don't run into this timeframe. In this circum, in this project, we're acting as the responsible agency, so it was actually another agency, the Fire District, that certified the EIR, and that puts us on a different timeframe. So, with a responsible agency, the timeline either runs from 180 days from when the lead agency, in this case, the Fire District, has approved the project, or within 180 days that when the completed application has been received by the responsible agency, whichever is longer. And in this case, for us, it's from the date that we deem the application complete. But that's what makes this project a little bit different, is our role is different than normal.
If I may ask a, a follow-up question. I don't intend this to be antagonistic, I'm just trying to get the lay of the land here. What, what is the requirement of the agency, if, since it's not the county in this case? I mean, we weren't informed, we didn't, weren't provided a draft environmental document, we didn't get the, the certified environmental document until late. We just had the staff report for a short period of time. I mean, could they have waited until the 8th of December to give it to us and still have it apply? I mean, this is, it's, the, the timeframe seems a little artificial here, so.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Orell, there is a process for lead agencies in working with responsible agencies as we're going through the SEQA process, and there are requirements for consultation throughout the process. And I believe Ms. McCurdy can address how that was handled in this case, but there are requirements that, for early consultation.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Orell, yes, the county has a very specific and formal process for reviewing documents prepared by other agencies, and the process that we use was established by the CEO's office, and it provides for review by all county departments that may have authority over the project and/or concerns about the project issues. And in this, with respect to this specific project, actually, there were three different cycles of responsible agency review. The first was with respect to an initial study in March of 2011, then there was a draft EIR in January 2012, and a recirculated draft EIR in February 2012. And as a result of the responsible agency review, planning and development, public works, and there was a third, the county fire department submitted letters, which are included in the final EIR. And also, perhaps the Montecito Fire District agent or staff could address additional opportunities that were available from their end for, because of course, they did go through a review process for the EIR, and I know it was available publicly and at libraries. They could, they could speak more specifically to that, if you're interested in that information.
Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for counsel. Would, would my vote in certifying or not certifying the EIR be challengeable, because I did not, I did not participate in the entire process, I did not review the draft EIR?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Phillips, no, I don't believe so. The, the process for the responsible agency, we don't actually certify the CIR. The EIR is already certified. We do have obligations to, to look through it as applies to this project, and to make findings, which are in your staff report. But the consultation process, you know, we do it as an, an entire agency with the county, and so it's, you know, we have a formal process for that.
I thought a condition precedent to us approving this project or not, would to validate the, the SEQA, the SEQA issue? Or to certify it?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Phillips, well, this time, the, the EIR is already certified, but you are making findings about the adequacy of the document for this project. And you're looking at, and you're correct, you are making findings about whether it's adequate, whether there's been any change of circumstance, whether there are any grounds to require further environmental review. So, your commission certainly has responsibilities in reviewing it and looking at it as it relates to this project. I'm sorry, I think I might have misunderstood your question about the early consultation, which is different than the responsibility of looking at the document.
So, to assess this document, the EIR, I need only consider the final document? I'm trying to determine whether my vote would be challengeable because I wasn't in the entire process. I didn't see the EIR, the drafts.
Draft.
Is that a flaw? Is that a legal impediment to, to my findings later?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Phillips, no, I don't believe so, but, but there is a responsibility, a requirement, that your commission review the EIR in this process. So you, you will want to have adequate time to, and, and part of what I'm hearing, the commission says that we haven't had, you haven't had adequate time to review this document. And, and that is perfectly appropriate, that you would want to have time to review the document as it relates to this project, and determine whether or not, I know you received a letter about subsequent environmental review, and, and that's one of the terminations that you would want to be making, is whether or not any additional environmental review is necessary. And to make that determination, you'd need to look at the final document.
My last question. Is it possible that the lead agency would amend the EIR that I have before me in, within 30 days? Is that possible? Or is this conclusive now? Is it?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Phillips, the Fire District has taken final action. They have certified the document. There actually is existing litigation over that document. It would be highly unusual for the Fire District to take, take that back up. It, it is considered final as of April 23rd, I believe, is when they took action, and litigation was filed against the Fire District on that document in May. So I believe it would be highly unusual for them to take any further action on the document.
Thank you very much.
But just, just one thought. Just for clarity, this commission, should we decide that the community, the applicant, and, and the, the community would be better served with more information, we could ask for a subsequent EIR on this? Supplemental?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, there is, there are standards under SEQA when a subsequent EIR shall be prepared, and it's under section 1515, 15162 of the guidelines. And the standard is that no subsequent EIR shall be prepared for that project unless it's determined, on the basis of substantial evidence, that there are substantial changes proposed in the project, which require major revisions to the EIR, due to the involvement of a new significant impact. So that's one. Another circumstance would be there are substantial changes occur with respect to the circumstances under which the project was undertaken, which require my, major revisions, due to increase of a significant impact, or substantial increase in the severity of an impact. And the third one is, that there's new information of substantial importance, which was not known and could not have been known in the exercise of reasonable diligence at the time the previous EIR was certified as complete. So, what your commission would be considering is whether or not there's substantial evidence to support one of these changes, one of these substantial changes in the project, substantial changes in circumstances, or new information, and whether or not we could support that for requiring a subsequent environmental impact report.
Thank you. Commissioner Idelson, please.
Okay, as I'm looking at this, we're in a box, as a commission. We have real restraints on this issue in a real timeframe. And the various options would be, if the commission approves it or disapproves it. Let's say, let's say it gets, the project, the whole project gets disapproved by the commission. In other words, they don't, then what happens?
You don't have a fire station.
Don't have a fire station, okay.
But as to the process?
But, but the process is, if it does not, if action is not taken, it automatically is implied that it's approved by a certain date.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Idelson, so two, two separate, if your commission ultimately, after hearing the, the hearing and the evidence, and makes a decision based upon findings to disapprove the project, that decision would be subject to appeal and could be taken to the Board of Supervisors. And then the Board of Supervisors would hear that de novo. On the 65402 determinations, if we don't meet the 40-day deadline, then it is, would be deemed in conformity.
Okay.
That doesn't give me a clue about the project.
Yeah.
All right. Is the commission in agreement that we will continue this item? Baseline question. Commissioner Orell?
I'll just give an indication. I would like to see the item continued. Apparently, it needs to be continued until November 28th, to fall within the, whatever is the December 8th deadline. I assume that deadline could be extended by the applicant if they chose? Is that correct?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Orell, I do believe there is a provision for extension if it's a mutual agreement between the applicant and the agency. And I'm just not having, I don't have the section right here in front of me.
Okay.
But I do believe there are.
Well, in, in any event, it sounds like we need to hear it. If we were to continue it today, we need to hear it on November 28th, and we either finish it on the 28th, or we've got a problem. So, to the extent that I made the initial So to the extent that I made the initial motion, I'm prepared, after we hear other comments, to amend that to 90 days to date certain of November 28th.
Okay, so that's your motion now.
Let's finish the comments, then I'll make one.
Okay. I think we're finished. Commissioner Phillips, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think since the majority of the commission has admitted that they're not prepared, we have little choice but to continue it. I don't think we can make a final decision when we admit we're not, we're not prepared to make one. So I would support that motion of continuance.
And I would support the motion as well.
I still come back, let's see, is that appropriate for me? I still come back to we could hear a portion of this, in other words, the staff report. That would prepare us better. We could hear any further public comment that would be on that staff report. I don't know whether to go further than that, but I do feel, we have a lot of material. We've done a lot of studying on it, and we still feel a little awkward on it, but we're not going to get any better if we don't hear the staff report. We've read the staff report, but hearing it, I think, is worth something, worth a lot.
Yeah, I still stand on the, where I keep standing with this, is I have no problem with continuing the item, but I do want to hear the staff report and public comment, and then at that point, continue the item.
Okay. Thank you. I think we are in agreement to continue the item until November 28th. Should this be a separate motion and then decide how to proceed with the presentation today as a second motion, or as a second part of the first motion?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, what, how we normally proceed is your commission determines whether or not to hear the staff presentation and go forward to the hearing, and then once we, and then there's a motion for continuance and a second, and we take a vote. And that's usually the last action. I don't think anything precludes you from doing a formal motion to continue it and then deciding to hear, to hear the item today, hear the presentation and hear from the public on it. So I think you could operate either way.
Mr. Phillips, please.
I'm just making a recommendation.
Please.
It seems awkward to me that we would move to continue because we're uncomfortable with the totality of the facts, then hear it, and then hear evidence. It seems to me we should wait for the motion vote until we hear the staff report, and maybe some of us will rethink it and be prepared to go.
Okay, good point. Are we in agreement that we move ahead then with the staff report? And that would also?
I just had a point of order. I just wanted to clarify, this is Anna Citron from Montecito Agricultural Foundation, that if you do vote to continue the item before hearing presentation, I just want to make sure that the deadline under Government Code Section 65402(c) that Ms. Van Mullen referred to, that the date you set would be within that timeframe. I don't recall what that date was. I just want to emphasize the importance of not missing that date.
Yes, I think, and counsel is keeping a calendar for us on this.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right.
We're trying.
Okay. At this point, would we like to proceed with the staff report? Mr. Overall?
The quick answer is no, but the longer answer is, I'm concerned a little bit about the process and not having somebody get disadvantaged here. We're going to hear the staff report, we're going to hear, supposedly, if Ms. Scott Stanker's wishes are met, we're going to hear from the public, but we won't have heard from the applicant. And, you know, suddenly, this, to me, starts to get really convoluted. We're getting part of the information, we're not getting all of the information. And since I know I'm not prepared to vote in favor of this, or against it either, for that matter, I would just simply prefer to say, let's hear it on, in November, and hear the whole thing straight up at that point in time. I think to hear a part of it and perhaps disadvantage one or another party seems to me to be a wrong approach. Now, I don't know whether the legalities of it, but it just seems wrong to me, so.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. Madam Chair, if we were to continue and we come back in November, would we hear the staff report again?
Well, I think that would be.
We would have to, wouldn't we? We can't just pick up where we left off. We'd have new public comment as well, I would guess.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips, if I could try to clarify, the staff recommendation is to hear the staff presentation and to hear from the public, including the applicant. We were never recommending that the applicant wouldn't be part of the proceeding, that's, we're recommending the normal proceeding. Then in terms of your question, if we make a full staff presentation today, which is our recommendation, in, if you then, if your commission votes to continue the item for future opportunities to review the environmental review or address anything that comes up today, what we would be doing as a staff presentation in November is just addressing anything that's new, maybe perhaps a brief summary of the key points that are made today, but we would not be going through this presentation for a second time full-on through. So I hope that's helpful.
Dr. Russell.
Also, following up on the comments that Ms. Sutrone made, please don't forget about the 65402(c) deadline, which is November 12th. So November 28th wouldn't cover that. So we would have to schedule some kind of a, if that was important, to not let that clock, we've got two clocks here. And one is December 9th, and one is November 12th. So if you want to do the, if you don't want to do the 65402 portion today, we might need to, and you think that it is important, we might want to consider scheduling a special hearing prior to November 12th. As awkward as it may be, I don't want that point to get lost.
Okay. Commissioner Overall, please.
A question for counsel or anybody else that wishes to chime in. Can the applicant make an election to waive the, whatever it is, the November 12th deadline on 65402(c), and roll that into the date that corresponds with the total project? And I guess a corollary to that is, and are they willing?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, 65402 doesn't address that option either way. It just has the language I read before about the 40 days, failure of the agency to report within 40 days. I think if the applicant is willing, one thing that's happened before when this is, when we've run into this deadline, we've had new submittal dates where applicants either agree to extend, or they actually withdraw their application and resubmit. So that's an option. I think the safest course is for your commission, if you would like to act before it's deemed conclusively inconformity, I think the safest course is to hold the hearing within that 40 days.
So I don't, I don't know that I got the answer. It sounds like it's not definitive whether they can extend the period or not?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, that's correct. It's not definitive whether that's allowed or not.
Well, maybe we ought to hear from the applicant then, whether they're willing to do that or not.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, our reading of 65402 is that this is a, something, it's not like a permit application. It's a request for a report from you as the planning agency on this matter to determine whether there's a conformity with the general plan. So it's a question of whether you make a report within a 40-day period or not. And that's why the deemed complete provision is in there, so that the applicant isn't penalized by delay in making that report. Our primary concern, however, is the Permit Streamlining Act and the deadline associated with that. So if we are able to have a hearing within a timeframe that meets the permit streamlining deadline, then this one we can work with.
Thank you. Commissioner Gottstanger? Oh, I thought you had a comment. Okay, so to the commission, how do we proceed today? Please. Commissioner Overall has suggested that we, would you like to repeat, reiterate your suggestion, please?
All right, I'll put all my thoughts in one motion. I would like to continue hearing this until November 28th with a waiver on the part of the applicant of, what is it, 65402(c), and roll that into the same timeline. I would like to not take comment from the public or have the staff presentation until we meet on the 28th.
Okay, thank you. That's a motion before us. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
No.
No.
Okay, well, we'll do a voice vote, please.
Roll call.
A roll call?
Commissioner Gottstanker?
No.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Idelson?
No.
Commissioner Overall?
Yes.
And Chair Burrows?
Yes.
So is?
So the motion carries.
Three to two.
All right.
Madam Chair, I just want to be clear. Commissioner Overall in his motion said that we would waive the requirement under 65402. That is not what I said. I said we would work with staff to make sure that the deadline doesn't expire. That's not a waiver.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. Yes, please.
And I also just want to clarify.
Please state your name.
Anna Citron, I'm sorry, Chair. If the deadline in 65402(c) does expire, that is to the benefit of the applicant, I just want to clarify that. So the fact that they're not particularly concerned about it doesn't mean that it's not concerning, and I would hate for your commission to lose the opportunity to determine the very important issue of whether this project is consistent with the Montecito Community Plan. So I would recommend holding a special hearing, as staff has suggested, within the 40-day window. Because I think, as County Council made clear, there is, even if the applicant were willing to waive that deadline, it's not clear that legally that would hold water. So please, we would request that you act within the 40-day window on the 65402(c)(3) matter.
Okay. Could we please have counsel's response to this? A second time?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I believe that the applicant has made clear they are not waiving the 40-day deadline, and I do think it's not definitive whether or not they have the ability to do that anyways. If you, if your commission would like to act on that application before the 40-day deadline, I would recommend that rather than November 28th, you look at an earlier date, November 9th or November 12th, as Dr. Russell recommended.
Commissioner Overall, please.
You know, sometimes, common sense and a willingness to work gets obscured by the law. I mean, in spite of Ms. Basham's indication that they're not willing to waive that, I thought your indication was that you would agree to a timeframe that set that aside until such time was, we can hear it on November 28th. If that isn't what you intended to convey, then you need to be very clear on that. And I would say, if there's any doubt, just a simple question, can we vote to not find it inconformity today and reverse the decision on the 28th of November if we so choose?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, I'll answer that in two parts. Your commission absolutely can act on the 65402 today, and that can be whether it's inconformity or not inconformity. And what happens after you take that action is that a report is sent to the Board of Supervisors. Well, depending on if it's A or C, but it's sent to the agency that's requesting it. We have two requests this time. So there would not be another opportunity to take a second action on that. If your commission would like to take action on that piece, on those two applications today, that is an option. I would recommend that, you know, you hear the staff report, hear from the public, and then make a decision on taking action on just those two items today. Then you could continue the CUP decision until November 28th, and you'd no longer have that timeframe issue.
Well, again, I think we ought to hear from the applicant, so.
Ms. Bright, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Just a point of clarification. The applicant is amenable to consider the 65402 concurrent with the CUP. Our point was, we request that that be, that occur prior to the deadline of the Permit Streamlining Act. So if, you know, we would just like to have them all considered together. We think that you need to be able to consider them together to make the appropriate decisions. So as long as we can hear all three before the Permit Streamlining Act deadline, we are fine with that. We want to work with you.
What is the deadline you're referring to? What is that date?
That deadline is December 9th.
Okay, then we can do it.
Thank you, Ms. Bright. I think we can do that.
Thank you very much, yes.
Are we, is the commission in agreement that we will take this approach?
Madam Chair, what we're saying is that we will hear the entire matter on the 28th of November.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, and we're in agreement on this? All right?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
First, one other point I'd like to make is that because, as County Council has said, there's not, it's not clear whether the applicant can waive the 40-day provision under the Government Code 65402. Another route would be to request that the applicant concur with withdrawing and resubmitting the Government Code cases, in which case, there would be a new 40-day timeframe that would start and would run so that we could hear the Government Code with the CUP case, and the issues of consistency with the general plan would not have been addressed separately.
Okay. Ms. Bright, please.
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the commission, the applicant is willing to withdraw and resubmit the 65402s to alleviate the heartburn that's occurring today, with the condition that the 40 days coincides with the Permit Streamlining Act timeline. So we will work with your staff to time it.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you.
Counsel, please.
And Madam Chair, just since there has been so much back and forth, I just recommend that you see if there's anyone else that wants to address the commission on these items before we move on with the item, or close this item.
Yes. If anyone else would like to speak to these issues, please come forward, and we will hear you. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Anna Citron. What Ms. Bright just stated, that they are willing to withdraw and resubmit the portion of the application concerning a 65402(c), we would support that approach, but we need to be absolutely clear that they do withdraw and resubmit, because again, the, we just don't want to be in a situation where the timeline has expired and we haven't complied precisely with the requirements of the Government Code. So we would support that approach articulated by Ms. Bright. Thank you.
All right. Please, sir.
Madam Chair and Commission, thank you for allowing us to come here today and discuss this project with you. If you don't know who I am, my name is Chief Hickman, Chip Hickman. I'm the chief of Montecito Fire Protection District, and obviously, this is a contentious issue, and for the most part, when you, you go into a structure fire, you try to alleviate some of those volatile gases prior to doing so. And I think that maybe a little bit of time might, might serve us well to be able to do that and to better prepare, have you folks be able to go through that material a little bit better. So we want to work cooperative and collaboratively with. So we want to work cooperative and collaboratively with you, and you are my constituents. So I want you guys to be on board and to feel good about this, as residents and also commissioners. So anything that we can do, I do want to say that it's important that we maintain a timeline, because we have a purchase agreement in place and that we need to engage on. And so it is timely, and we need to be timely about it. But I'd like to extend as much as we can extend to you to make a thoughtful decision on this issue. So, anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that I understand your situation.
Thank you, sir. We welcome you, and we understand your situation as well. The important thing is that this commission be prepared to make the decisions that we're being asked to make, and that we have additional time to understand the issues before us.
I agree.
So thank you, sir.
Sure.
All right. Anything else on this issue that the commission needs to decide? Are we ready to move forward? All right, could we please have a restatement of the dates that we will be back with this? Oh, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm looking at, so we're looking at this November 28th for the hearing on this. So today, what we're doing is continuing the item from now to then.
Yes.
But given this December 8th, 9th date, as far as this streamline, permit's streamlining, does that mean that as of that hearing, that we have to have approved or disapproved this? We can't continue the item with a request for more information or anything after that November date. We have to hear the whole thing and be, and have all the information and be ready to vote. We cannot continually pass that item. Is that, am I accurate about what I'm hearing?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottstanker, the opportunity would be, if on the 28th, there's still issues that you want addressed, we could hold a special hearing on Wednesday, December 5th. That's normally a county planning commission hearing date, but they have, their hearing has been canceled.
So we, so in answer to my question, we actually have to make a decision on this project, all three aspects of the project in our agenda today, before December 8th, period. That's it. We cannot go beyond that with any deliberations or continuances or anything. We have to be done with it by December 8th.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottstanker, I think County Council mentioned that there may be a provision for a mutually agreed-upon extension of the timelines provided in the Permit Streamlining Act, but that's, I don't know that we have a definitive answer.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, challenging it. I just want to be really clear to the commissioners that if, that we don't get to back this up again, we have to have done our homework. We have to have done whatever we need to understand the project so that we can vote on it on that date.
Absolutely. Ms. Bright?
Okay.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify. I understand your concern, and that is why we were hoping to give you the opportunity today to start vetting out some issues. However, if it's continued to November 28th, and you need another continuance to December 5th, we are happy to accommodate both those two dates. We will do whatever you need with both those two dates. Our only caution and concern in granting, or in, you know, with the cold continuance as it stands, is we have this overarching timeline in issue, as the chief has mentioned, regarding the terms of the acquisition. So at this point in time, we would hope that the goal is for everyone to collaboratively have a resolution by December 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your cooperation. Any other comments from the public or from the commission? Commissioner Idelson, please.
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, we started our meeting at 9:00, and now quarter to 11:00, and we still haven't done anything on this topic. And I don't think we're serving the community very well, or the fire district, or the public. And so I urge my colleagues to come to some closure on this, and so we can move forward.
And I think a decision has been made to reschedule this. Would we like to, and respectful of your comments, Commissioner Idelson, would we like to set a time certain at this point? Could we set the time certain at 9:00 a.m. on that day?
Madam Chair, based on the administrative items that are normally on your agenda, I would suggest either 9:15 or 9:30.
All right.
9:30.
Okay. Could we please set 9:30 as a time certain to hear the fire item, Fire Station 3 item? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We will take a short break, and then we will move on to item two on the agenda. Thank you. I think we've all, be out of here in a little while. Okay. Is the commission ready to proceed?
Ready.
We are back, back on the agenda for the October 24th meeting of the Montecito Planning Commission. We will now move to item two, and I would ask Ms. Foster to please read that into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the request of Steve Ford, agent for the owner 880 Picacho Lane Trust, to consider case number 12 L.L.A. 2, application filed on March 13, 2012, and to determine that the project is exempt pursuant to Section 15305(a) of the State Guidelines for the Implementation to SEQA.
Thank you so much. Could we please have the staff report?
Good morning, Chair Burrows, members of the commission. I'll be presenting the 880 Picacho Lane Trust Lot Line Adjustment. The property is located at 880 Picacho Lane and is Zoned 2E1. It is for a lot line adjustment between existing lots A and B, shown here. The lot line adjustment would take existing Lot A, which is 2.84 acres, and existing Lot B, which is 1.01 acres, and adjust the lot line, but it would not alter the acreage of either lot. So as you'll see in the next slide, the line will be moving, but the acreages will remain the same. Here we see existing Lot A and B, and this is the existing lot line, and this is the proposed lot line, right here, shown in blue. So basically, the line is shifting, but the acreages are going to remain the same after that line shifts. As discussed in the staff report, the project would be consistent with requirements of the Montecito Land Use and Development Code, Chapter 21, Subdivision Regulations, Land Use Element, and the Montecito Community Plan. And before I move into the ordinance consistency, you might be wondering, why are they doing this lot line adjustment? They're doing it because they want to place a pool in a very specific location, and that lot line adjustment accommodates that. So with regard to ordinance consistency, the Land Use and Development Code requires that no lot that conforms to the minimum lot size shall become non-conforming as a result of the lot line adjustment. In the situation at hand, Lot A is currently and would remain conforming as to size at over 2 acres, and Lot B is already and would remain non-conforming. Therefore, as a result of the lot line adjustment, there would not be the creation of a new non-conforming parcel, being because of the fact that it's already non-conforming. Therefore, staff recommends that you make the required findings for the project, including SEQA findings, accept exemption pursuant to SEQA Section 15305(a), and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. And that will conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of the staff report? If not, is there a report from the applicant?
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Suzanne Elidge with Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting Services. I'm covering this item for Steve Ford, who managed the project today. And I do not, I'd be happy to give you a presentation, but I think that it's pretty straightforward, and I don't really have anything to add to what Nicole has, what Ms. Lou has presented to you today.
Okay. Does the commission have any questions?
Actually, I have one quick question. There's no basis for us not to approve this, so I think that's probably what'll happen. But I am curious, when I look at the layout of the site, it appears like the smaller parcel is not going to have any development on it. And I just wondered whether any consideration had been given to doing a lot merger, rather than a lot line adjustment.
You know, we really didn't discuss that with the owner. It's usually preferable, from the standpoint of market value in the future, and for, this is planning for estate purposes, that both parcels are retained. And in this case, it was such a small adjustment to accommodate the pool location near the guesthouse cabana area that it made sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, are there comments from the commission? Let's move into deliberation and action. Is there a motion? Commissioner Gottstanker, please.
Yeah, I'll move, your commission make a motion to include making the required findings for approval, subject to Attachment A, determine the project is exempt from SEQA, and approve case number 12 L.L.A. 000. All those numbers subject to the conditions included in the Attachment B.
Counsel, please.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, just for the record, I just would recommend that you do ex parte, and then just call for public comment.
And public comment.
Just to confirm that nobody hears.
Yes, absolutely. I apologize for that oversight. Is there any public comment on this, on this issue? Let's please do have onsite, site visits and ex parte communication, beginning with Mr. Overall, please.
I drive by it every day.
Mr. Idelson, please.
I talk to Suzanne Elidge.
Mr. Phillips, please.
I received a call from Suzanne Elidge's firm, but I didn't see the property. I was called to ask if I'd like to, but I've driven by it, I'm familiar with, familiar with the site.
Scott Stanger, please.
So I'm very familiar with the site, and I did have a conversation with Steve Ford from Susan's office.
Thank you. So the motion stands. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve this project as presented as recommended by staff. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We will now move to item three. If we could please have that read into the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the request of Clay Orell, agent for Michael Sheldon, owner to consider case number 12 CDH 28, application filed on September 24, 2012, and to determine the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Sections 15301L and 1, and 15303A and E, and 15304B of the State Guidelines for the Implementation to SEQA.
Thank you. Could we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, my name is Jay Ritterbeck, and I am the planner for the Sheldon Project. As discussed in Section 4 of the staff report, this project was before the commission about 14 months ago, and this is a reapplication for a previously approved permit, which expired on August 24, 2012. The applicant was having unexpected difficulties in finalizing a three-way lot merger, and that delayed the recordation of the, of the three separate parcels becoming the one, which was a condition of approval of that previous permit. So that difficulty is what prevented that permit from being issued. The project is located in southeastern Montecito, south of the 101, between the railroad tracks and the ocean, and west of the Miramar. The project's site is composed of three adjacent legal oceanfront lots, all zoned 7R1, single-family, urban residential, and within the California Coastal Commission's appeals jurisdiction. In the next series of slides, I'll walk through the proposed project plans. Existing development on three separate parcels include a 1,178 square-foot, single-family dwelling, associated decking, and a 413 square-foot, two-car garage. Views of the existing neighborhood, from the east, the south, west, and from the north. Proposed development includes demolition of the existing single-family dwelling and decks, merging all three lots into a single parcel, construction of a new 3,226 square-foot, single-family dwelling with associated decking, changing the garage roof from a pitched roof to a flat roof, and to construct an upper-level deck. Elevations of the proposed project, from the east, south, as viewed from the ocean or the beach, from the west, with the garage on top, and from the north, again showing the change from the pitched roof to a flat roof to match the style of the house. The project is exempt from SEQA review pursuant to SEQA Sections 15301, 303, and 304, and as conditioned, is consistent with the County Comprehensive Plan, Montecito Community Plan, and the Coastal Land Use Plan, as well as all applicable zoning requirements. PND recommends that the commission make the required findings for approval, determine the project exempt from SEQA, and approve the project, subject to the conditions included in Attachment B to the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions or comments regarding the staff report? If not, is there a report from the applicant? A presentation from the applicant? If not, we will now move to public comment. Would anyone in the public like to comment to this item? There being none, we will now move to site visit disclosure, an ex parte disclosure by the commission. Mr. Overall, please.
I got the report. I reviewed the notes from previous approval.
Mr. Idelson, please.
Nothing to report at this time.
Mr. Phillips, please.
Nothing.
Commissioner Gottstanker, please.
Yes, I did have, I did have a conversation with the project architect, Clay Orell, from AB Design Studio, just to kind of update me on what happened before, and, you know, be clear that, where we are now.
Thank you, and I had no, no ex parte at all. All right. Would the commission like to comment further on this project? If not, we can move to consideration and action. Is there a motion?
I move to accept staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No, it was unanimous. Thank you. We now move to item four on the agenda. If we could please have that read into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is the request of Raymond Appleton, agent for owner Randall Van Goochwinkel, to consider case number 12... to consider Case Number 12 CDH 18, application filed on June 22, 2012, and to determine the project is exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to State SEQA Guidelines, Sections 15301 and 15303.
Thank you. We will wait just a moment. Commissioner Gottsinger has stepped out. I don't know, her purse is still there. I think I'll go get her, don't you think? But she can't vote unless she hears the whole thing. Let me see if she's ready. Excuse me, please. If we could please have the Staff Report?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is Brian Banks.
Oh.
Pardon me, one second.
Battery? We're going to have a busy Thanksgiving getting ready to be here the two days later.
Yeah.
All the EIR. I just don't know what someone was thinking that we didn't have that right out at the shoot. It makes no sense at all. Should I go off the record? Yes.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that we take a five-minute break to deal with the technical issues.
All right. We are on a five-minute break, please, to deal with the technical issues. October 24 Agenda. We will now move to the Staff Report, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Apologize for the technical glitch there. My name is Brian Banks. I'm Planner in Development Review, South Division. The project before you today is for the Van Wolfswinkel, single-family home demolition and new, single-family dwelling and accessory structures. The project site is located on Channel Drive, the residential parcel immediately to the west of the Biltmore. I trust that the Commission is familiar with that area. So again, this is a residential parcel immediately to the west of the Biltmore. The Commission may also, ah, well, we have some of it, so we can look at the small screen.
Do you know?
Yeah. The Commission may remember, a few months ago, that there was a lot-line adjustment for the same property and the property immediately to the west of that. This slide, which I hope you can see, shows an aerial photograph of the area. This is from several years ago, so the vegetation may be slightly different. However, it is a good representation of the immediate area. The subject parcel is here, the existing, single-family dwelling, which you may be able to see with my cursor located here. The project consists of demolition of the existing, approximately 1,100 square-foot, single-story, single-family dwelling, construction of a new, two-story, single-family dwelling of approximately 2,500 square feet, and it does include a basement of approximately 1,600 square feet. The project also includes a detached garage of approximately 480 square feet, and a cabana of approximately 800 square feet. Included is a new swimming pool and spa, and landscaping that does include underground rainwater harvesting cisterns, which are there to collect the rainwater and use for irrigation for the residential landscaping. Project also includes grading of approximately 950 cubic yards. This slide shows the site plan, with Channel Drive beating, being over here on the right of the slide. You can see the extension of sidewalk, which is also part of this project within the road right-of-way of Channel Drive. The proposed new driveway that would serve the parcel, the proposed new, two-story, single-family residence, the proposed two-car garage and pool cabana. This location here would be the proposed swimming pool, spa area, and the proposed pool equipment at the corner. This slide shows the elevations of the structure, the proposed dwelling, I should say. This would be the view from Channel Drive, so this is the east elevation, if you were at the Biltmore property, looking towards the subject property, looking west towards the subject property, this is the elevation that you would see. So the east elevation. Below is the south elevation. This would be the view from Channel Drive, looking north towards the residence. This slide depicts the west elevation, which would be from the neighboring property and the driveway. And at the bottom is the north elevation, which is the rear of the structure. This slide just shows a representation of the basement configuration as it relates to the existing topography, the red line being an existing grade, so you get a sense of the existing topography. They're relatively flat, and the basement area consists basically of just excavation within the footprint of the proposed structure. This slide depicts the garage and cabana elevations. This slide is representing the proposed landscaping. Again, new sidewalk area with pavers within the right-of-way of Channel Drive. There were comments when the project was originally reviewed at conceptual review at the M-Bar, from a representative of the Biltmore. The original proposal had a red brick sidewalk proposed, and in order to differentiate the proposed project from, clearly differentiate the proposed project from the Biltmore, the representative from the Biltmore requested that that paving material be changed to something different. So the applicant has proposed a sandstone-colored, interlocking paver that has a different pattern from the Biltmore's brick pavers. You can also see a low fountain in front, approximately two feet in height, and the proposed driveway area with the interlocking permeable paper areas. This slide was just meant to depict the existing vegetation between the Biltmore, along the Biltmore and subject property, shared property line, to kind of get a sense of how dense that vegetation is there. These are also just representative photos of the site. Photo to the left would be towards the rear, looking northeast to one of the Biltmore structures, and then the slide would show the adjacent property to the west. The project was determined to be exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to Sections 15301 for the demolition of the existing dwelling, and Section 15303 for the construction of the new structures. The project is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, including the Montecito Community Plan and the Coastal Land Use Plan, and the provisions of Article Two. Staff recommends approval of the project, and I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I'm sorry? I think so, yes. We want to shut the door so that our audience can hear a little bit better.
Is that real?
Yes, it is. Does the Commission have any questions in regard to the Staff Report?
I, well, yeah, I just have some questions about the site plan. Could you put the landscape plan up again? Because we're, now we're having to deal with these little pieces of paper that, as you all know, I can't see.
I apologize for that.
So there was a couple of things that were indicated in the landscape plan as being blue. One, I'm assuming is a, is a pool, but then there was something, was there another water feature or something that is in blue on the site plan?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottsinger, yes. Again, Channel Drive being to the right of the slide, in the front yard area, there is proposed a pond with some fountains. It's approximately two feet walled pond area, essentially in the front yard area, and then the pool would be located at the rear, adjacent to the cabana.
Yeah, this is what I wanted to see. Yeah, okay, okay. Now, so I don't think, it's not going to see, we're not going to, thank you, that is so nice. I so hate it when I try to read these drawings from the little, little, little things. The other question that I had was, where are these cisterns located? It says new landscaping and two underground cisterns totaling 25,000 gallons. Where are those? Ray, I mean, thanks for helping out.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottsinger, it may be hard to see, the applicant has a larger plan. If you can see my cursor, there are two rainwater cisterns, one being 15,000 gallons, one being 10,000 gallons. The first would be to the east of that fountain we just located.
Yeah.
And the other being at the rear of the dwelling, between the dwelling and the new garage.
Are those existing?
They are not. They are proposed.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate the intention of, that they're not existing. So then, are those calculated, I mean, because that's a lot of stuff there to put underneath ground. Are those calculated in your grading numbers? Because you're going to have to grade, you're going to have to export for the pool, you're going to have, now you're going to export for those. So those are in your, in your export numbers? So, well, that was going to be my next question.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Staff has a comment?
Madam Chair, I think it would be good to get the applicant's representative on the record for the answers that he's providing.
Oh, fine, okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottsinger, I have those answers for you from the Staff Report as well.
Okay.
Section 5.3 of the Staff Report includes the grading breakdown. So of the approximately 950 cubic yards of overall grading, we've got 450 cubic yards for the basement excavation, and 195, so let's call it 200, approximately 200 cubic yards for the excavation required for the cisterns. The balance would be approximately 55 cubic yards of cut for the pool, and then approximately 100 cubic yards calculated by the engineer for the shrinkage and grubbing operation. So that would total your 800 cubic yards of cut.
Thank you. It occurs that the 55 for the pool is, this must be a very shallow pool, but that's my, that's my, okay. So then, the other question that I had here was, you indicate that in the Staff Report, Montecito Community Plan circulation, M14, about, and it has to do with construction parking, and that we have, we're saying that construction parking is going to be on-site. When I look at this, and everything that's going to have to happen on a rather constrained lot, I don't, I really want to know how this is going to happen. I really don't see how this is going to happen, and we already have a really constrained neighborhood as far as parking. You know, when you've got 15 or 20 different subs coming in, I don't get where they're going to park. And that's going to be either on Channel Drive, or whatever the road is behind there, and this occurs to me as a problem. So I would, yeah, Mr. Advocate, yeah. I think they want you on the record somewhere over here. Okay.
Hello? The way, the way it's planned to be done is, as the foundation work is done here, there's no work to be done up here at all. This is all, this will be the last thing done. All the construction parking will be in this 100-foot by 50-foot area.
And then they're going to back out to do the pool?
It's a two-foot pool.
Oh, it is a really shallow pool?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great, that's, yeah.
It's at, it's only about six inches below grade, and it's got an 18-inch border, so it's a two-foot.
So it's a raised?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And so this is all being left to be done at the very end of the job.
Okay. That's my questions for right now.
Commissioner Overall, did you have questions of Staff Report? I thought I saw your light on.
I would also say that by then, this parking back here will be available, against parking in these spaces, and they can even park here before the lawns put in, so we'll have these spaces also.
Okay. Sir, would you like to now make your report to us?
Okay.
Do you have any further comments you would like to give? You're the applicant, right?
Yes, I would.
Sir, if we could use the podium, I think we might have.
I'm going to be handing you these, so since they're not, as they're not an overhead project. projector, I happen to have photos of my transparencies, so.
And we have seen, I think the photos are being distributed now to us, sir.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
I'll need to see one by one what you're holding up, what you're looking at to put them in order for you. The first photo is a photo similar to what Brian had which shows the neighborhood. And as if, as you can see, I've actually drawn on it our house on that. And the red area is the second story area. The white area is the first story area. The second photo, I believe, shows our relationship to the ascending three houses to the west of us. Is that true?
This.
Yeah, you can see the Dole's house and then you can see the next house, Hess' house, and you get up to the Arco Building. You can see, we're down in kind of a hole, actually. We're the lowest, all the water drains to our property. Then you see, we were trying to look at all, we see the building, the Dole House immediately on one side looking down at our property, the photo of the Biltmore Building looking down at our property. And then would you hold up the one, Mr. Edelson on your left hand, what is that you're holding up?
The umbrella.
Okay, here's what we're trying to do. We can see our immediate neighbors and we've met with them many times and gone over everything. But I was trying to show you, we have a neighbor to the rear and that picture in the Edelson's is a picture, if you see a white spot just to the left of the, of the umbrella, that is our neighbor to the rear. Now, they, they actually have a three-wide lot, so their home is behind the house, two houses over from us. But, but still, we were looking at, Mr. Van Wilsen was very concerned about designing his home to be, not to be very compatible and not impact any neighbors. And we, you can see where we indent at the second floor on the Biltmore side. Our home, if you look at that first photo again, our home is almost located where the existing house is. We didn't want it to extend any further back and be alongside the Dole home and we even inserted the back of the house in that spot so that we're back 90 feet. And we were back 90 feet to be respectful of the Biltmore first lodge there. So it was a real juggle. Also, the Dole view of the ocean is stopped at the Biltmore forage. It's about a 40-foot forage, it goes all the way to the street. And so we didn't want to get out in front of that and maintain that. So we really worked real hard on making sure everybody still had their views and that any views they had of us, even though you can see their views of us, they're kind of right on top. The person to the rear, we got a glimpse and then you'll see a couple of other photographs where I show you where I'm trying to get through those ascending houses, you can finally see a little glimpse of that home in the back. They have no view of us. There's one there of just a palm tree, which is the closest thing I could get to a little glimpse from our property looking through the Dole, the rear of the Dole property, at their property. I've, I've brought these up, I bring this part up because on Friday I received a phone call that that neighbor to the rear had a concern about looking at our house, even though they can't see us. She's got an oak tree forest between us and there. They got, and they invited me up to the house and I went up there and she's got a little picture view between the two houses that are over to this side of us. Now, her pool level is looking over the roof of that second ascending house from us. She's that high up because her property right behind us is pretty level with us and then it just goes up like that, about a 30-foot rise. And she's up there overlooking the other two houses and has a little window view. She could trim her bushes a little bit more and get a little bit more of a view, but what she was concerned about, and this is her words, is if they decided to remove these oak trees, they could see the back of our house. And if you look again at the very first thing I gave you, you can see, and I explained to them then, that the back of the neighbor's house is so far back and taller than ours that that cuts off most of any view they would have of our home. They might see the very back of it, but if they would also then see that big two-story element of the Biltmore Building that were, that's overlooking our property at the back. I said, why, and you don't get any ocean view because the, again, the Biltmore forage is all the way out even past us, there's no ocean views that way. And she said, well, we might just want to cut down the trees. Well, first of all, I don't think she'd be allowed to cut down the oak trees. But second, it's totally within her power. The only reason that they would cut down those trees would be to see our house. I mean, and the Biltmore Building. There's nothing else they would see. Or the back of Miss Dole's house. But still, she said, well, how about some story poles at the back of the house just to show me that? Well, we really didn't, the BAR didn't require any story poles. They looked at the same photographs, they could see, nobody saw us, the neighbors that were there, Mr. Dole period, representative of the Biltmore period, nobody had any reason. They didn't require story poles. We're, we are, our second story is the narrowest on the street. Our first story matches with their house next door. It's a narrow house, as you saw by the elevation, the narrowest part is the front part and it is even indented on the second floor on the Biltmore side. So we tried to keep it narrow, keep it under height, no variances, no modifications requested, even gave a greater setback. I went up and down the street looking for compatibility. The last newest home is the home of Mr. Lee, which is way up on the corner. It's a huge home set much closer to the street, wraps around, and somehow they got a little pool house or something approved right at the stop sign. I still don't know how that happened, but we're way away from anything like that. And next to our immediate neighbors, we're right in exact scale with them or smaller than they are. And I understand that she, she might not be certain about if she removed her trees, what she would see at the very back of our house. But again, if you look at the very first photograph I gave you, which is this one, I'd just like to ask you to look at it one more time. This shows, and you can match it, and it matches the site plan, okay? The site plan shows the back of our house is right down in the street.
Sir, I'm not really sure we're on the record when you're here.
If you could, yeah, if you could.
Okay. I'll get it on the record.
Yes, please.
The, you can see that the back of our house is just a little bit behind the front of their house and it goes out, it's a bit shorter, it goes out a little bit in front of their house. And the white part is the lower story and the red part is the upper story, which we deliberately tried to just make one bedroom, two bathrooms, keep it small. So we're concerned that they would be asking for story poles, we don't think that's necessary. BAR did not think it's necessary. And we would certainly not like your motion to include that we must include story poles now at the rear of the, at the rear of the property considering she can't see it.
All right.
And would never remove her oak trees, I don't think.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Oberol, please.
Mr. Abelson, could you talk a little bit about the basement?
Yes.
Its size and the proposed uses?
Yes. I have a floor plan here if you'd like to see it. The floor plan is, is for Mr. Van Wilsen and his family. The upper floor is a one-bedroom, two baths. The middle room, the lower floor is just a living room, a den and a dining room and a little laundry room. It's because it's a small house. The basement is the two children's rooms and a media room and a playroom off the children's rooms. Then outside the basement immediately, under the terrace, there is a wine cellar and the FAU utility, stuff like that. If you'd like to see it, I have them right here.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant?
I do, oh, excuse me.
Yes, Commissioner Edelson, please.
Yeah, I want to hear a little bit more about the cisterns. You have two of them coming at 25,000 gallons and I realize it's probably collecting rain water so that it gets reused.
Just from the roof, yeah.
Is that to be reused for irrigation purposes?
Yes, and I'll tell you about the cisterns. They were at on again, recently off again because of the expense. I talked to Tom and Laura over the Montecito Water District, how much are we really saving? Maybe $15,000 extra for the landscaping in over 10 years and the cisterns could cost us $100,000 to $150,000. So they were off again for a while. Now Mr. Van Wilsen has thought about them again and he's just, he is of a mind, of an environment that he just thinks it's the right thing to do to catch this water. So.
You're collecting only 33 units of water if you have it fully loaded and I would agree it'd probably take several lifetimes to return the expense of building it. But are they, what are they being built of and where are they located exactly? And how are you treating the water so that it's?
It's straight coming from the roof through a filtration system built into the-
So mosquitoes can't live in the thing, that's my-
No, no, it's completely, it's three feet underground. Right now, we're looking at the more modern tubular shape. We've discovered that if we go with a squareer shape, we don't have to dig as deep, don't have to do as much grading. So that's being decided right now before we submit for the building department. But right now, it's all planned with this new, the most modern shaped, most efficient system.
Composed of what kind of material?
Well, it's composite. I don't, I don't know exactly what kind of material.
Okay, any further questions?
Yes, thank you. The, is the basement, can you walk out of the basement? Is there a door to walk out?
No, no.
Are there windows?
There are in the bedroom, in the children's bedroom windows. And the basement window, the depth of, was kind of decided by that because the fireman, you have to have a, you can't have more than a 44-inch drop to the windowsill in the light well. And then you can't have more than a 44-inch drop to the floor. And that's kind of how it got picked so that the children's bedrooms could have windows at that, at that level.
And the basement is not included in the FAR calculation?
It is not, no.
And MBAR didn't have a problem with that?
Not at all.
Okay.
Since it's just a three-bedroom home, they had no problem at all.
Well, we either count it or we don't. I'm not sure when it comes in. You didn't put story poles up. Are you sure you're not blocking views from the beach of the mountains? I can't tell from this.
We, I could look through the photographs here. Brian might have even had a photograph, what he did in the back.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Gottsinger, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to this basement issue while we're looking, looking at that because we just kind of put aside the fact that we've actually, we're actually saying and that the basement is declared as basement square footage and we haven't added it into the square footage of the house. But we're now, it's not really a basement, it's now habitable space. So I don't quite, you know, for me, I want to, I actually want to find out whether this, I believe that at least some portion, because we now have windows that are fire access, this is habitable space, this is done basement space.
Of course.
Just because it's below the, this then becomes three stories, you know, in the, so, you know, and this is a struggle, I understand, I can see Ms. Black shaking her head, you know, but this is, this has been an issue for the community for years. We tried to get it into the work program. Now we have an incredibly constrained site where we're allowing a project in the coastal zone to have a, over the square footage if you take the base part of the habitable space and put it into the square footage. So this becomes a problem, I think, for me. I certainly know that there may be other commissioners that have, because other commissioners here have worked with me on trying to get this basement issue resolved throughout the community. And now here we're confronted with it again and, and I really can't continue to approve projects where we allow basements to be habitable spaces, you know?
Can I speak to that just for a moment?
It drives everything.
I think we wanted to have a comment from staff.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottsinger, the way that the floor area ratios are defined in the Montecito Architectural Guidelines, they do not include basement areas that are less than 50% exposed. So in this case, the floor area ratios that were considered were for just the first and the second floor because that's what's visible. And Ms. Black is looking at the exact section. The intent behind that, the floor area ratios as they're defined, is for the size bulk and scale. So the thought was, as it relates to this project, that because the basement is not visible, then it wouldn't contribute to the size bulk and scale that was under M-Bar's consideration.
I would also say-
The applicant, please.
That long before the client bought the property, we researched it thoroughly about having a basement because he wanted to have not a one-bedroom, two-story home, but a, he wanted to have room for his kids and two children. And if you'll see on the floor plan, the living room, dining room, kitchen is very tight, a little area. And the upstairs, one bedroom with two baths. And so the two children, in order to have the two children's bedrooms and the media room down below, and we double-checked and triple-checked that that was allowed, it would not be counted in FARs. And so he bought the property on that, on those conversations. We've been through the review process over a year and a half and spent like $90,000 now on the plans and process and he only bought the property because he could have this basement for his two children's bedrooms.
I understand, I understand, you know, and I, you know, there, it really isn't anything that I can't, can't deny the project because it actually, you know, but I'm actually, I'm only so that-
I hear what you're saying.
My comments are, you know, from the point of view of the community and the architectural guidelines and the community plan, that this has been a problem throughout the community and we don't seem to be able to get it resolved with staff on how do we change the ordinances so that we-
Oh, I see.
See, and we've been asking for a couple of years to get it part of the work-
I understand now.
Okay, can you understand? This is not about your project, okay?
Ms. Black, please. Madam Chair and Commissioners, you have to apply the ordinance that you have.
I understand.
So, starting there, you have to apply the ordinance that you have. I think there are a couple of sections of the design guidelines and the definition of basement that are helpful. So the design guidelines include a general statement. And the general statement says, "The Montecito community is concerned about the mass of a structure as it appears to the community, particularly in relation to surrounding open space and structures in the neighborhood. In order to ensure that development will be compatible with the community, the size of homes will be reviewed in relation to other homes on similar-sized lots." And then basements that, as Brian indicated, that don't exceed that 50% exposed area do not count in the calculations, however, floor area calculations, however, they still are considered in the calculation of height. So what you have before you is a project that complies with the recommended maximum house size in the guidelines, complies with the height restrictions, and the use of basements is not restricted by the ordinance. That's not, and the Montecito Design Guidelines are not intended to address use, they're intended to address size bulk and scale. So I know it's not, I know it's an issue the Commission wants addressed in a different way, but those are the rules we've got on the budget.
That's the rules we got.
Chairman Burrows, could I just say one last thing before it goes on?
Yes.
We specifically designed this little building knowing that all the buildings around us were taller, wider, bigger, took up more space. And we had our little space, but we made our building narrower, both first and second floor, and we made it shorter than our neighbors on either side. The Biltmore building in the back is even taller than we are looking over our entire rear yard. And, and then we have the massing, of course, of the Biltmore. So we really went out of our way on the size bulk and scale to diminish our impact on our neighbors and even the window placements and designs and conversations with our neighbors and the Biltmore. And the Biltmore, we even, we did a full panorama of their whole street so that Ty Warner himself could look to see that we weren't duplicating and mimicking anything. And we even went and got a swatch of his paint and he mailed this to him. And here's our color, there's their color right from the paint can. These are his, these are his awnings, these are our awnings, both new and faded, new and faded. Our lights are different than his. And finally, not only the red brick, we had a very happy meeting just a week ago with Bill Medel, his manager. Ty was in town. Ty looked at the whole panorama that we- Ty looked at the whole panorama that we did, he looked at all that. He thanked us very much for our effort. Besides the fact that we have a forest between us at the end of his sidewalk, a 40-foot-tall forest of trees, or the length of the property. So we, we really did try to, for size, bulk, and scale, to be smaller than everybody. And because of the grades, we're shorter than everybody.
Yes, sir.
And not have, and be totally compatible with the neighborhood in size, bulk, and scale.
Yes.
We went out of our way.
We do appreciate that. Are there any other questions at this point? Mr. Overall, please.
I would like to see the floor plan, floor plan of the basement. You indicated you have it, and I'd like to see it.
The wine cellars and the utility areas are not considered habitable that are under the terrace and have no ventilation or windows or anything.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Since Brian just walked one commissioner through the floor plans, I think we probably ought to at least explain the floor plan of the basement to the entire commission and then pass the plan down so that everybody's working off the same information.
I think that's a good idea, and for the television audience as well.
And then we'll make it available. I think there may be a set of plans up on the table, but if there aren't, we'll make it available on the table as well. In case anybody in the audience wants to look at it.
Okay. So the commission can move to the table to see the plans?
So, Madam Chair, let's have Brian explain it, and then we'll bring a copy and we'll just have the commissioners take a look at it, we'll pass it down, and then it'll be available on the table if anybody else wants to see it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Essentially, as the applicant has summarized, the basement includes children's bedrooms, some mechanical spaces, a media room, wine cellar, that type of thing. Importantly, as it's come up as a question, there isn't interior, exterior access directly from the basement. However, per the Building Code egress requirements, there are light wells, also other Building Code requirements for habitable space in terms of light and ventilation. So there are windows, light wells, that are predominantly subgrade, that are required for that area. So you will see those reflected in the plan. we have our presentation working, you can see the, the relationship of the basement to the topography and the, to the house itself, and as well, those light wells the staff was referring to earlier.
Madam Chair.
Okay, we have two questions.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Overall first, please.
Mr. Appleton, two questions related to the MBAR review. If I'm reading the notes correctly, it only received a conceptual review with comments only, no, no action was taken, is that correct?
Those two were required to go first there before proceeding.
Okay.
To you.
And you've only been before them once, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, if I can just respond to your question as well. That's correct. And we take projects to the Monosito BAR, and we get them to a point in the review process where they're ready for preliminary, but we don't actually allow preliminary approval by the BAR until your commission has seen those projects that are subject to your review. So they followed the normal process. I just wanted to make that clear.
The comment, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I am correct. Ms. Black, I am correct, though, they could have gone back for more than one conceptual...
No.
No?
No.
I believe I'm Ms. Black, so I'll answer the question. Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, we only go to the MBAR for conceptual review until the project is ready for preliminary. And many projects go more than once for conceptual review, but once it's ready based upon the BAR's review for preliminary, we don't go back again.
Okay, all right.
Their comments were that they liked the project so much that they were ready for preliminary, but could not make the motion.
Sir, let's move to Mr. Overall. We're stepping on each other here.
Madam Chair, perhaps what we should ask is that Mr. Appleton sit down, and then if the commission has questions for him, they can direct those questions to him and he can come back to the podium.
That's a good idea. Mr. Overall, please.
I was going to save his knees because I had one more question. I wanted to make sure that I understood you correctly, that the height of the basement, the finished height of the basement is six feet.
Well, no, no, inside is eight feet.
Is eight feet?
The ceiling inside.
I thought, I understood you to say it was six feet.
Six feet below grade.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant? If not, we can move on. Anything from staff? All right. At this time, we will move on to public comment. Bill Middell, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Middell with Ty Warner Hotels. And I do appreciate Mr. Appleton working with us. Both he and Mr. Van Wolfinkel made great strides on setting back the property, made some changes to the pavers and things like that. Our concern was, and I voiced my concerns to the MBAR at that time, was to respect the historic integrity and fabric of the Biltmore Hotel. That being said, everybody in this community loves the architecture of the hotel and tries to copy it. Our worries were that we wanted to make sure that there was something that was a little different, that guests and visitors, whatever, would know where that separation was. So I appreciate what the applicant had done. But I also would like to include in your comments to MBAR before they do go to final is to make sure that those changes do take place. And also to study further the awnings and railings and chimneys, that they are a little bit different than what the Biltmore is. And the applicant last week told me that they would include that. But knowing how architects are at MBAR, they also have their own desires and things change. So I would just like to ask you to include these comments as well with instructions to MBAR as they study this project further before final comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments? We'll now move to, yes, Mr. Phillips, please.
Well, I'd like to comment on Mr. Middell's statement. I don't think we're in the business of advising applicants that they can't replicate, duplicate, copy, or mimic a neighbor. I think that's well beyond our jurisdiction. I see your point, but I, I can't recall seeing anything that would permit us to do that. Ms. Chair, there's a question for you.
I'm sorry. Ms. Gossdinger had it up.
He wants to speak to that.
Mr. Appleton, please. Thank you.
We immediately set about to change our chimney design. Sophie Calvin, who is our designer, in fact, has come up with, I think, like several options that we're going to show them. There was a discussion about the lower railing and how it looked a little bit, and we're committed to doing that as well. Their main feature along this Biltmore is arches and some places, square places. We deliberately, if you look at elevations, go up and have a little corbel, so it's a kind of a complement between an arch and a square. We're keeping our promises to Bill Middell, and those will be reflected in those small changes. They asked for very small changes. Those small changes will be reflected, Bill, when we go to the MBAR meeting. But since last week, it wasn't time to come back in and change the drawings that had been delivered to staff three weeks before, so. So the chimney still has the same kind of chimney, the railing detail is still the same.
Okay, Mr. Phillips.
I understand. I just wanted to emphasize that that's in the nature of a good neighbor and not a requirement that you'll see from this commission, I believe.
Thank you. And Ms. Gossdinger, please.
Yeah, Mr. Banks, could you put up the slides? There was two, but one that actually show the elevations of the structure. I just kind of wanted, there was one that actually showed where the basement line was and while he's doing that, no, yeah, oh, that's, that one, or that one, that's the one, okay. Just that, I just kind of want to look at that a little bit, and then I just want to take the opportunity to reiterate to Mr. Phillips' comments, you know, that this, this board is not an architectural review board. We don't do that. So whatever agreements that you're making with Mr. Warner and the hotel, that's between you, MBAR, as far as the continued detailing, that we're land use people, so I'm just trying to figure out where we are with that, you know. So now, what, obviously, I can't see, but what is the height of this building from grade up? Because I see that we've, we do have two feet of the basement and the first floor and the second floor. What is that total maximum height there?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottsinker, it's 28 feet.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that is consistent, well, Mr. Appleton's testimony has been that that is consistent with the height of those other structures that are on Channel Drive, is that...
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottsinker, I'm not sure what the adjacent dole property, the height of that was. The distinction, I would agree that it's taller than the proposed structure at 28 feet. The difference being, several years ago, the height methodologies were changed so that we had a more clear apples-and-apples approach, as the commission may remember. So what's reflected here, and you can see it best in this elevation, is this dotted line represents that, that parallel overall height. So that height measured from existing grade to the top of the ridge, so that there is a consistent methodology to approaching heights of structures. Previously, in the coastal zone, there was an average methodology used where you take the points at each, I believe it was 30 feet around the structure, and that could be gamed to the extent that, you know, some of these structures well exceeded the, I think, the intended height. And so that, therefore, the height methodology change has allowed that more consistent apples-and-apples. So while I, in summary, while I don't know the exact height of the neighboring property, I do believe it's taller than the 28 feet proposed.
Thank you.
So just in the coastal zone, then, it is 20, what is the maximum height?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gottsinker, the height limit is 25 feet. However, there's provision in the ordinance for roof pitches of four and 12 or greater to allow an extra three feet in height, such that your overall height to the ridge would be 28 feet. And that's what the project is consistent with.
Thank you.
Moving on with public comment, Christina Lee, please.
Hello, hi, I'm Christina Lee. I am a neighbor. I own 1205 Hill Road, so I'm behind 1210 Channel. And first of all, I want to thank you very much for your time and listening to me. And also, I'd like to thank you for your patience and forbearance. This is all very new to me. I also want to say that I absolutely love where I live. I feel very fortunate and blessed to live in such a beautiful area. I also want to say that it's important to me to maintain friendly relationships with my neighbors. So just so you know, I'm not here out of anything except the reality that I need to be prudent about the property that I own. I have no desire to be demanding or difficult. I just need to feel that I did what I should do in order to protect my interests. I'm a single mother of two beautiful children. I bought the property for us to be healthy and happy and to enjoy it. And the reason I'm here today is to really get further understanding in terms of any impact or effects that the work at 1210 Channel may cause, in terms of any implications limiting my children and my enjoyment, our privacy, the value of the property. You know, maybe down the road, you know, years down the road, I may sell the property to live off the proceeds. So I feel I just need to be prudent and responsible and feel that I've done, you know, checked all the boxes that I should have done so that a few years from now, I don't look back and think, you know, I was negligent on our own behalf by not, by not standing before you here today. So really, what I'm requesting is, I understand that story polls can be erected, and again, this is all new for me. And I would just very much welcome that opportunity so that I could really visualize fully what, if any, impact there would be for us. And I've got the assistance of Chris Price here, who I would invite as appropriate to speak on my behalf. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. We welcome your participation.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mr., oh, sorry.
Could you point out in that aerial photograph where, which property, that is your property there with the pool?
That's me, isn't it?
That's you?
That's me, right?
Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
That's me.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Christopher Lee, please. Christopher Price, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Just a quick follow-up to Christina's testimony. As you know, this is her house here, her lot, and it's, it's the width of the three lots facing Channel Drive. And a point of clarification on Mr. Appleton's part, there's one oak tree along the property line. The rest of that vegetation's pitasporum, and it's not very attractive. Our concern is, over time, if this property is redeveloped or re-landscaped, what will the effect of the proposed house be on their privacy? Hence, the request for the story polls. We frankly think there will not be one, any effect, but we think it is the prudent approach to have story polls erected. And as Commissioner Phillips expressed earlier, it may be a prudent advice for the, for the BAR in their review to look at the effect, if any, on the public's view of the ridge line, based on a one-story cottage going to a, really, three-story, single-family home. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to ask and answer, thank you.
Does the commission have any questions? On the issue of story polls, how exactly does that work? Some projects have them, some projects do not.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, that's correct. It's really at the discretion of the BAR. Some applicants voluntarily install story polls because they know that the BAR is going to want to see them, so they'll install them early on. But the BAR really makes the call. If your commission felt that it would assist the BAR, you could certainly recommend that they request story polls before granting preliminary approval. And I'd just point out that the MBAR's preliminary approval of this project would be subject to appeal to your commission. So if a neighbor were concerned about the design of the house upon viewing the story polls, that would certainly be something that they could appeal to your commission.
Thank you. You know, if I were Christina Lee, I would also like to see story polls to see about how it would impact my property. So that is my comment on that. Mr. Phillips, please.
I'm also interested in the scenic public view. Staff has concluded that there is no impact, but I don't know how they came to that conclusion. Brian, could I ask you that question?
Please.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, absolutely.
Is it, is it?
I'm going to try to get to a slide which I think may, may be helpful. I'm going to try to get to a slide which I think may be helpful. So just kind of a peek-a-boo shot here, but this view would be from Channel Drive looking north towards the mountain. I believe that's the concern you're expressing, is how did we get there in our staff report?
Yeah.
Also, so based on the existing vegetation that's there, the rather extensive vegetation with the biltmore and the properties to the north of this property and a long hill road, combined with the fact that we've got the biltmore immediately adjacent and another two-story structure immediately adjacent, and the landscaping that goes along with those structures, staff did not believe, based on the increase in height from a single-story structure to a two-story structure, based on the setback of approximately 80 feet back from the road, that this would present a significant obstruction to the views from the mountain from Channel Drive or the beach. The beach would actually be lower than Channel Drive in this case.
I think I'm looking at the ridgeline right through there.
I think so.
And it seems to me it's going to be blocked. And that is a problem, that we have to, we have an obligation to protect that view corridor. As to, well, this is to the commission, as to Ms. Lee's issue, I think we have to be careful and not suggest to neighbors that there is a legal right to a view. We don't have that. We have a good neighbor policy, but, you know, we don't want to give Ms. Lee the sense that this project would change necessarily because of her view change.
Yes, Mr. Eilson, please.
I'd like to suggest story poles from the standpoint of public view, and that is one of my concerns.
Sir, please.
Thank you, if I may, just to correct.
Please restate your name for the record.
My name's Christopher Price, thank you, representing Christina Lee. Our concern is not for ocean views. Our concern is privacy, window-to-window privacy from the construction of the new residents, and also just general compatibility, which is codified with your good neighbor policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the commission? Ms. Scott Stanger, please.
Yeah, I would also support any motion that was made to have a minimal amount of story poles erected. I don't think the entire property needs it, but I also do have a concern about that ridgeline.
Yes.
And the width of the structure, you know, it's going from a very small cottage to a building that is tall and wide, and I don't, you know, I can't really tell whether it obstructs those mountains, but from the photographs, you know, from this, from driving by the site, I kind of am going, my experience was kind of, whoa, this might be a problem. So I think story poles would be absolutely appropriate.
All right. At this time, I would like to, Mr. Overall, did you have a comment?
Do you get to comment?
All right. I want to move to a declaration of site visits and ex parte communications on this. Mr. Overall, please.
I'm familiar with the site, and I had no ex parte communication.
Familiar with the site, no ex parte.
I'm familiar with the site and no ex parte. Mr. Phillips.
I was saying.
Yeah, I actually.
Actually did drive by the site and walked around the front of the site on the beach.
Thank you so much. All right, we will now move it to the commission for any other public comment. Then we'll move to the commission for discussion, deliberation, and action. Discussion, please. Any further discussion? Mr. Overall, please.
I want to go back for just a minute, something we probably can't do much about, but it has to do with the basement, and it has to do the grading, and it has to do with the future. One of the reasons that we implemented the growth management ordinance, not the growth management ordinance, the architectural guidelines, was to try and arrive at something that had some measure of describing what was compatible. And because architects are creative, they have found methodology around the way those guidelines were written. And so now we have a, you know, a very small cottage-style home that is going to disappear, and we're going to end up with the development of a home that's somewhere in the neighborhood, I added it up, I can't find my notes, somewhere around 5,000 square feet when it's all finished. A large portion of that is accountable by the basement. And Ms. Black is, you know, right about what the ordinances require, but what it ignores is, one, it ignores the impact of grading, because there, for a lot this size, there's a substantial amount of grading in an area where you wouldn't expect it. This is not a hillside. This is a flat lot down by the beach. And so we've got a lot of grading, and I think that's not compatible and consistent with our guidelines. So that's one component. The second component is, you look at the parking available for this home, it's going to be two parking spaces. We wouldn't allow two parking spaces on a house similar to this in another area. We'd probably expect more parking, and particularly in an area that's impacted as the parking is along Channel Drive. And then you have the other component, which has to do with the impact on the community of all the services that are used, in terms of gardeners, you know, cleaning staff, all of those elements. The impact on the community goes up, regardless of whether it's underground livable space or above-ground livable space. And we're flying around, we've done nothing in a period of, what's it been now, five years since this, our effort to get this problem addressed was first initiated? And so here we are with one more project that we're probably going to have to approve, which, and you can't fault the, you know, the people who bought the lot. They did the due diligence on what the ordinances require. They bought the home on that assumption, but, you know, here they are stuck, having to stick something underground, and the community's stuck with a piece of development that really isn't compatible with what we said we wanted 20-some-odd years ago. So that's not so much a, it's just a comment. I suppose I will have to support the project. I wish I didn't.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, is there a motion in regard to the project before us? Mr. Phillips, please.
I move to adopt staff's recommendations.
With the recommendation on story poles?
And to request that MBR require story poles as they see necessary.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to speak to the motion for a minute.
Please. Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Actually, it's allowed.
No. The motion is before the commission now.
It was just a point of clarification to the previous speaker, there are two visitor parking spaces also on the lot.
Thank you, sir. All right, the motion before us is to approve the project as presented by the staff, with the additional thought that we would request story poles as the MBR would like to have them. I would think them necessary and compatible. Please restate your motion. Mr. Overall, please.
Madam Chair, I do have a question related to the MBR's authority. If story poles are erected, and they see a concern raised by Commissioner Phillips about blocking the views of the ridgeline, what happens? Since it's back at the BAR, we've taken our action. Would it come back to us? I mean, they don't rule on land use issues, so how would that have an effect?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Overall, that's a very good question. If your commission is requesting that the MBR consider story poles to address that issue, I would recommend that you do it before you take action on the project. If your commission is recommending that the BAR consider story poles to enlighten the property owner and the neighbor about the coexistence of the proposed project, then I think it's fine for the commission to take action today, because the BAR can address those issues. But if it is to determine if there's an inappropriate blockage of the backdrop, then I think that's something that the commission really ought to consider. And so it's really, it's really up to you on what your purpose and intent in requesting story poles is.
Mr. Eilson, please.
Thank you, Ms. Black, for clarifying that. I appreciate it. And I want to withdraw my second.
Mr. Phillips, please.
The, I don't think we can make a finding as to the visual impact without seeing if there is one, unless it's so obvious. I can't tell, I was standing in front, and I can't tell exactly what 28 feet looks like from the beach and the road. So our option would be to continue this until MBR makes a decision on story poles and a finding as to whether it's impacting ridgeline views.
Ms. Black, please.
Madam Chair, if I can comment, I don't know that story poles necessarily have to go back to the MBR. If you feel that story poles are necessary for you to make a determination about consistency with the visual resources policies, then you can simply say you need the story poles before you can do that. If you'd like the MBR to also look at that, we can try and make that happen as well. But if it's really for your, to support your ability to make a finding, then you can certainly request those and continue the matter. And if that's where the commission is, and it sounds like that may be where the commission is, then I would suggest you invite the applicant's representative or architect to the podium and ask them how long they think they might need to.
How long?
How long they may need to install those story poles, so we can ascertain an appropriate continuance date.
Thank you. Mr. Appleton, please. I think we'd like to see story poles. How soon can you do that?
Sure, I think that's fine. I think the story poles are fine. Whatever the next, we could do, as soon as the next continuance, a week, two weeks, whatever. But I do have a question about it. From the tip of the biltmore down to Mr. Lee's property at the very end, the far end, I believe it's all built up like this, and because of the way Hill Road suddenly turns up, so the biltmore's blocked it all beforehand, but the way Hill Road suddenly turns up right at the downhill spot of Ms. Lee's property, I believe that in that whole thing, there is going to be one 40-foot-wide area where you can see a glimpse of the mountain for the whole three blocks.
Thank you.
And that's where we're building. So if we, if our ridge top goes into that one only 40-foot area, does that mean we can't have the second story? I mean, we need to know about this now, if, because I know that that's the only little window for three blocks.
Thank you, Mr. Appleton. Now, we'll move to staff, please.
Madam Chair, we'll work with the applicant.
Okay. Thank you for agreeing to the story poles. And so we will let staff work with you to get it done. Is that, are we in agreement?
I'm still, got to tell something to my, to Mr. Van Woeswinkel, if he has a.
Madam Chair, we will talk with you about it as soon as this hearing is concluded.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the story poles are.
And our motion would be to continue the item to the November 28th, for the applicant to work with staff in this, in putting up the story poles, so we can see them prior to the next hearing.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Staff, please.
And Madam Chair, just to let the commissioners know, when those story poles are erected, as we typically do, we'll let the commissioners know, so you can go by and have a look yourself.
Thank you so much. Then are we done with this issue for today?
I think you need to take a motion in a second to continue to November 28th.
All right. Is there a motion to continue this item to November 28th? It has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.
No.
No, we're not.
Madam Chair, two more items.
Oh.
So.
I'm way ahead of myself.
First of all, I don't believe you've continued item, or dropped item number five, so I'd like you to make a motion to drop item number five, which is the temporary use, special events ordinance.
Yes.
Item. So if you could make a motion to drop that, and as I indicated earlier on, we will re-adjandise that when we're ready to.
So moved with a quick question. We will get a staff report on that before the hearing, right?
Oh, of course.
Because there was nothing in the packet that said it was going to be dropped.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Madam Chair, if I can just clarify, once we resolve the direction we're going with the County Planning Commission, our intention is to come back to your commission with ordinance language. So right now, you don't have ordinance language implementing your action from, or your recommendation from the last hearing. So we're just trying to catch up the County Planning Commission, that won't be back before So did we drop that yet? Did you? Okay.
I move to drop item five from today's agenda.
And we had, there was a second?
Second. I think.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So item five is dropped. I would request, just in terms of planning, scheduling, that this not be on November 28th.
Madam Chair, there's no way it will be on November 28th. I promise you. One additional item, I just want, I know you discussed the potential of having a hearing on December 5th. Potential, not, you haven't said it, and I just wanted to ask the commissioners if you'll be available on December 5th, if in fact you need to have that hearing.
I will make it available.
Correct, correct.
I will make it, I will be here.
Okay. Well, just, my understanding is that that's the last hearing opportunity to make it.
Within the timeline.
Right. So just, if you could check your calendars and let either Sharon or David know, that would be very helpful, so we can just make some tentative plans.
Just a point of clarification, I believe, Madam Chair. What was indicated to us is the County Planning Commission scheduled for that date had been canceled.
Yes.
I don't know that that necessarily means there isn't another date that would be available, but that was the date that was cited.
Madam Chair and commissioners, that's a very good point. It certainly would be the easiest date for us to accommodate, because we know this room is available. But if you find that you have a personal conflict and you want to suggest a different timeframe, that would be helpful as well.
Are there any personal conflicts? Can we go ahead and schedule that date? Mr. Overall, will you be in town?
I won't know until I get home, look at my calendar.
Okay. So just let, Madam Chair, that's okay. We'll just, we have some time, but I just wanted to get the commission thinking about that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything else before the commission today? If not, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Special thanks to the staff today.